Good afternoon. I'd like to call the City Council meeting of April 12th, 2016, to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please call the roll. Councilmember Dominguez, Hart, Hotchkiss, Murillo, Rouse, White, Mayor Snyder. Here. There was a late Finance Committee meeting, although the Chair is here, but the other two, I believe, are on their way. All right. Item number one, please. Proclamation declaring April as National Poetry Month.
The County of Santa Barbara is widely recognized as an art center, providing a spiritual home for creative activity and for writers in particular. And since 1996, the Academy of American Poets has designated April as National Poetry Month to highlight the extraordinary achievements and ongoing legacy of American poets and increase visibility, presence, and accessibility of poetry in our communities and culture. And the city of Santa Barbara, recognizing the value of poetry, established a poet laureate position in 2005 in order to direct proper attention and honor to the spoken word by utilizing poetry to celebrate and elevate community events. City poet laureate Sojourner Kincaid Roll will be leading the community through poetry-focused events and programs throughout the month of April. And whereas the city of Santa Barbara recognizes the value of the Arts Commission's participation in the Poetry Out Loud National Recitation Competition through a partnership with the California Arts Council, National Endowment for the Arts, and National Poetry Foundation, a program that helps high school students master public speaking, build self-confidence, and learn about their literary heritage. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby declare April as National Poetry Month in Santa Barbara. And thank you so much, and I know there's things for you to share.
Thank you. It's always an honor for me to come. Madam Mayor, thank you very much, and members of the City Council. I'm honored to be here to represent the poetry community and the community in general, because we, in many ways, are a community of poets. So we have a huge amount of events for our Santa Barbara Poetry Month, and I brought a calendar along. It's a beautiful calendar. It's online, designed and printed by our dear graphic designer and former poet laureate, Chris Yost. And I hope everybody will see a copy at the library or go on to... Back to the mic, okay. So anyway, if you'd like to visit all of the Poetry Month events, they're very prominently placed on Facebook and they're in newspaper articles, but there is a website, sbpoetry.net, where all of the events will be listed, and on a daily basis, you can just have them come to your calendar. And we really enjoy having the community come and participate in poetry events. We have lots to say here in a very few minutes. I appreciate the proclamation. I appreciate the poets who are here in the audience today. And I'd like to ask my former poet laureates, our poet laureate emeritus, Chris Yost and David Starkey. And one of the things that we have the honor of doing today is presenting an anthology, which was created on the occasion of the 10th anniversary of the poet laureate program by the city of Santa Barbara. And we're just so pleased and honored with this. And David Starkey is going to tell us about the anthology. David?
Well, I do have copies of the anthology, and I will give them to our mayor here to pass out. So what breathes us is 10 years of Santa Barbara Poets Laureate. And so I want to, first of all, thank everyone who was involved in the making of this. Jenny Brush, recently retired Chair of the Santa Barbara County Arts Commission. There she is. She was really integral, as was Mayor Schneider herself, and thank you so much for writing the foreword to the book. That's fantastic. Also, to the City Council, we appreciate your support. City of Santa Barbara, Santa Barbara beautiful. All our poets laureate, from Sojourner to Chris Yost, my partner at Gunpowder Press, who designed the book and makes all our books look so fantastic. Paul Willis, Perry Longo, who couldn't be with us, and of course, the late Barry Spacks. And we also want to thank the first unofficial poet laureate, David Olivera, who now lives in Cambodia back in 1999. And finally, Chris Potter, the painter, whose work is on the cover, who graced it with that. Have I forgotten anything, Chris? All right. Thank you so much.
Perhaps you might show a copy of the book for the audience to see. I did want to mention briefly that the artwork on the poster is from Barry Spacks, from our tradition.
And so there's just so many... I just really want to reinforce to the community that I know is listening and watching, and perhaps will see this broadcast, how much we feel appreciated and supported through people in the community who are not necessarily poets, but people who love poetry and support poetry. And I can't tell you, I think recently, I counted up and I had gone done to more than 40 events in the year that I've been poet laureate, and I've been to many, many groups and many, many events. And one of the things that we've developed, which I think is very interesting to you, is the poet laureate program or the poets laureates have become poets in residence at the Santa Barbara Museum of Natural History. And I think it is almost like a partnership with the poet laureate program. The museum is excited, it's their centennial anniversary celebration, they're having many events throughout the year, and we're infusing poetry into the Natural History Museum. It seems like such a natural place for it to be. And one of the things I say about the museum is it's paradise within paradise. And so it's just all about us singing the glory of our town and presenting ideas and commentary and issues that come up here. And in closing, what I'd like to do is I'd like to read a poem, a small poem that I've written. It's a poem that I had hoped to deliver several months ago at some of the events where I was asked to do a poem. I didn't get this one done. So it's entitled "Until Now" for Jenny Brush. Jenny, could you come hear your poem, please? And this is a thank you on behalf of the poet laureates and really speaking in some ways for the artists of Santa Barbara. "Until Now" for Jenny Brush. "It seemed all had been said, yet here we are, remembering the many days you answered yes, the many ways you stood for us, the many nights that we looked into the crowd, there you were. We look around, you are here, we are here, together." Thank you. And I just would like to, and last thing, is acknowledge a few of the poets that have come today. Carol De Canio, who puts up the exhibits in the library of all the young people's work and at Chaucer's bookstore. Lois Klein, who runs a regular favorite poetry event for months and months, for years and years. She's been going on with the Faze poetry reading. Laurianne Bozilar, who does many events here in town that embraces and brings together the local poets. Enid Osborne, who is also a strong supporter of poetry activities in Santa Barbara. And finally, Melinda Palacio, who brings pride to all of us as she travels all over the country, being a nationally known poet. We appreciate you and we appreciate everybody else. Thank you.
Proclamation declaring April 10th through 16th as National Library Week. We thought these two worked well together. Come on up. All right. Libraries are not just about what we have for people, but what we do for people and with people. And libraries have long served as trusted and treasured institutions. Library workers and librarians fuel efforts to better their communities. And libraries are evolving in order to serve their communities and to continue to fulfill their role in leveling the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. And libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative STEAM programming, maker spaces, job-seeking resources, and the power of reading. And libraries and librarians are looking beyond their traditional roles and providing more opportunities for community engagement and deliver new services that connect closely with patrons' needs. And libraries support democracy and affect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socio-economic status. And libraries, librarians, and library workers and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. So therefore, I, Helene Schneider, by virtue of the authority vested in me as mayor of the city of Santa Barbara, California, do hereby acknowledge and proclaim April 10th through 16th as National Library Week in the city of Santa Barbara. I encourage all residents to visit the library this week and explore what's new at your library and engage with your librarian. Because of you, libraries transform. Thank you for all your leadership in such an amazing institution. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much, Mayor Schneider. I am Jessica Cadiante, the library director for our Santa Barbara Public Library System. And I do want to introduce a few key people I have here with me today. I have our Outreach and Programming Librarian, Gwen Waggy. Our Adult Services and Reference Librarian, Christina Hernandez. And our Accounting Technician, she pays all our bills, Norma Cervantes. And today is the actual National Library Workers' Day, so we are celebrating all of our staff, volunteers, and supporters, all day today specifically. And I'm delighted to accept this proclamation on behalf of all of our libraries here in Santa Barbara. National Library Week is definitely a time to celebrate the transformative powers that our libraries and our librarians promote, but also it's a time to celebrate the transformation of our libraries. We are shifting from services that are based on what we have and shifting more towards what we can do for and with our community. We are about being a collective impact with our community. We are moving from that warehouse of materials, of things, to a participatory learning organization. And we are reimagining what library services look like in Santa Barbara. It is an exciting time. We will be having a State of the Library meeting on April 26th at 6:30 at the Faulkner Gallery at the Central Library. I encourage all of you to come and check out what is new and exciting at your library. Thank you so much.
Employee recognition service award pins.
I'm new at this. This year's April 2016 Service Awards for 10 Years. Hillary Allen, Administrative Specialist in the Finance Department. Andrew Berman, Project Planner from Airport. Thomas Chirpeck, who's a firefighter in the Fire Department. George Gonzalez, who's a grounds maintenance worker in Parks and Rec. Anthony Lamarcas, who's a firefighter in the Fire Department. Tia Rose Rodriguez, who's a firefighter in the Fire Department. Moses Romo, fire engineer in the Fire Department. Craig Stewart, fire engineer in the Fire Department. Erin Vaughn, fire engineer in the Fire Department. Celebrating 15 years, Marcus Mendoza, grounds maintenance worker two in the Parks and Recreation Department. Celebrating 20 years, Cindy Leyva, administrative specialist, Parks and Recreation. Carol Lupo, executive assistant in the Fire Department. And today, celebrating 25 years of service, Hector Balboa, streets maintenance worker two, Public Works Department. Vidal Gonzalez, streets maintenance worker two, Public Works Department. Jose Medina, custodian in the Public Works Department. And today, we have two employees who are celebrating 25 years that are with us today. Kenneth Brown, parks supervisor, Parks and Recreation Department. And Lou Gutierrez, wastewater collection system lead operator from the Public Works Department. Thank you. And if you gentlemen could come up, please?
I'll do Kenneth Brown first. Come on up. Ken Brown was hired by the Parks and Recreation Department as an hourly employee in September of 1990, and then as a grounds maintenance worker two in April 91. He was promoted to crew leader in 2000, and then to parks supervisor in 2006. Ken is the eighth generation of his family born and raised in Santa Barbara and oversees the parks on the north side of the city where he played as a child. He also supervises the department staff who provide carpentry, equipment repair, and irrigation management to the Parks and Recreation Department. Ken manages the replacement, repair, and maintenance of the 22 playgrounds in the park system. Ken worked in the nursery industry through high school and college and learned of Santa Barbara's substantial horticultural heritage at an early age. Having grown up with parents and grandparents who were farmers or gardeners, he decided to pursue a career in horticulture. He's an avid plant collector, attends a garden at the West Side home he shares with his wife, Felicia. Ken and Felicia enjoy arts and crafts, vacationing at food destinations, and working at their church. Ken's knowledge and skills make him a valuable resource to the Parks Division on a wide variety of topics. Ken, it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service at the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and members of council. You mentioned playgrounds, and actually, right at this moment, a contractor is working on replacing the playground at our very popular Bonnet Park on the West Side. And hopefully, in the next few weeks, there'll be a brand-new shining example of a good playground there. Like so many people, I'm sure, I didn't really intend on a career when I started here, but you suddenly turn around and 20, 25 years are gone, and it shows that you're pretty much in it for the long haul. We have a wonderful park system, so I want to take this opportunity to point out how really unique, how really complex and vibrant it is. In a lot of agencies, as I'm sure you know, parks are often afterthought or a low priority, and here, they've never been that. Here, they've always been well-supported, well-supported during budget time and policies. And I think it really shows, and it makes it a vibrant part of the city. I thank all my coworkers who've shown up to celebrate for me and my wife, who we are celebrating our 19th anniversary next week. And then I have my 50th birthday two weeks after that, so this is kind of a wrapping it all up into one. I thank you all for the services you perform and for the support of our park system and hope to see you in another five years. Thank you.
Louis was hired as a temporary maintenance worker one in Water Resources Distribution and Collection Section in October 1990, and shortly thereafter, in April 91, was hired permanently as a utility worker one. In September 1991, he was promoted to utility worker two, and then in May 94, promoted to a senior utility worker, where he remained until July 1999, where he was once again promoted to wastewater collection system lead operator, the position he holds today. Louis is a certified wastewater collection system operator, has been the go-to guy to answer sewer system-related questions, with his extensive understanding and knowledge of the city sewer system that he learned during his 25 years with the city. He's received recognition for going above and beyond the call of duty, providing accurate work consistently, and exceptional customer service, and he continues to provide leadership to field staff who provide diligent maintenance to the city's complex sewer system network. Louis resides in Santa Barbara with his wife, Efrain, daughters Leanna, Sydney, and Victoria, and sons Mike and Xavier. Louis is a valued member of the Public Works Wastewater Team, where he maintains the city's wastewater collection system and related equipment to ensure safe and reliable environmental protection for the community. So it's my pleasure to honor you today for your 25 years of service to the city of Santa Barbara. On behalf of the City Council, we congratulate you on this admirable achievement. Congratulations.
These 25 working... Sorry. 25 working... 25 years working for the city of Santa Barbara Water Resources have been a pleasurable working experience. I'm grateful for the success I've had. I started when I was just 20 years old and progressed in my career throughout those years and plan to continue to do so. I would like to thank my... or thank you for giving me this time. I'd like to thank my beautiful wife of 20 years and five children. Without their support, on those long days, nights, and weekends, working for the city of Santa Barbara would not be possible. I would also like to thank my other family members that are present today for their support. This was a wonderful job, and I want to say thank you to my friend, mentor, superintendent, Manuel Merrill, who has worked by my side for these past 25 years. We had our ups and downs, but together, we have built an awesome working relationship. Without my ten hard-working, committed crew members, the job would not be as satisfying for them. I am thankful. Thank you for acknowledging this achievement with me here today. Thank you.
It's great to see such a crowd acknowledge their coworkers and just ask on your way out to take your conversation outside the council chambers so we can continue the meeting. Thank you all for being here. Okay, any changes to the agenda?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We will be moving item number 23, Conference with Labor Negotiator, to next week's meeting.
Okay, so we'll move... we'll cancel out item 23. And public comment, we have a number of speaker slips here. We'll start with Chief Cromback and Chief McElroy. We're going to come on up, and then followed by Pete Del Bello.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. John Cromback, interim police chief, and my sidekick, the fire chief. We didn't rehearse that either. We're here today to acknowledge National Public Safety Telecommunications Week, this second week in April set aside by Congress in 1991 to recognize and celebrate those unsung heroes on the other end of the 911 call. And those are the men and women of our communications center, the dispatchers. They're also the lifeline between those officers in the field and the firefighters in the field, and to take this opportunity to publicly thank them and recognize them for their hard work and job-well-done commitment, dedication to the city and the organization, but more importantly, to the community.
Madam Mayor and council, it's really important for us to take time to recognize the dispatchers and the people who work at that center. They're really the link to the public. That's who the public's going to be talking to. That's who, when you, in a moment of desperation, call 911, that's the person that you're going to be talking to and handling your problem and making sure that you get help, and they'll stay with you the whole time until somebody gets there. But they're really an unsung hero. They're really, like Chief Cromback said, it's a very difficult job, because when we get out there, we get the resolution, we get the feedback, both physically and emotionally, from the people that we're helping. The dispatcher ends when the... that relationship ends for the dispatcher when the phone hangs up. So they're, like I said, they're... the public doesn't see them, but they're there every time you call. So, and they're critical to the work that our officers and firefighters do. So it's really important we take time to recognize them, and we are glad to do that today. Thank you.
Thank you. Pete Del Bello will be followed by Mike Chu. And is Joseph Newman here? Okay, and Michael Miranda, you're here. Okay. We have up to six minutes if we need that.
Okay, great. Madam Mayor and City Council, my name is Pete Del Bello, and I'm a Santa Barbara native. I'm proud to report that on Friday, April 8th, the International Chiari Association, also known as the ICA, turned five years old. I am the founder and president of this Santa Barbara-based, all-volunteer, nonprofit organization. Chiari is a serious neurological disorder. The color for Chiari has been purple since the 1970s, but the ICA was the first to really promote the color when it was founded in 2011. Since then, purple has been seen all over the Chiari world. That is why I only wear purple ties. I actually have 29 purple ties, so maybe I need a few more. The ICA means a great deal to me. I was born with Chiari. And decompression surgery in 2009 saved me from the wheelchair. And I started the ICA nearly two years later. Since then, we have helped people in all 50 states and 115 countries. I was hoping that our mascot, Courage the Bear, could be with me today, but even if it's almost 2:30, he overslept. So, but here's a picture of him right here, and he... of him at Stern's Wharf, actually. And he's seven feet tall, so actually, he's looking forward to the basketball court coming into the Creole ball field. And Courage has been... he's been at the beach, he's been in the mountains, he was even here with me at council chambers a few years ago. And yes, Courage the Bear has been everywhere. The reasons for the ICA's success are crystal clear. In addition to a supportive public, it is an organization skilled at preparation, self-discipline, time management, and attention to detail. The ICA has seven people on its board of directors, seven people that work as one. There are no egos, there are no drama kings, no drama queens. They understand that we don't have time for that foolishness. We have important work to do. All seven board members, myself included, are also graduates of Santa Barbara High School. One of my mottos is that we're all put here to help others and to not let anyone or anything define you. Don't let your health, or what you look like, or where you're from, determine your present and future. Each person is valuable. I have a good team, and I'm a strong leader. Santa Barbara is an international city. At the ICA, there have been many days where I've talked to four to five different countries. To learn more about Chiari, which is spelled C-H-I-A-R-I, and the ICA, please visit our website at www.chiariassociation.org. That's www.chiariassociation.org. We also have our Facebook page, actually, nearly has 7,000 likes. As mentioned several times in the past, I will be running for Santa Barbara City Council in 2017. I'm proud to be the leader of the ICA. It is an honor. It will also be an honor to represent District Four on the City Council. Thank you, everyone, for your time and kind attention.
Mike Chu will be followed by Gene Tyburn.
Good afternoon. A little nervous here.
Fine.
I don't want to complain about what's happening in the lower state around State Street. I'm doing the business 35 years in 500 State Street. And, well, as you know already, we have so many small problems from the homeless. So I want to formally complain about the homeless people that are hanging around in the State Street, especially in the nighttime. While daytime, I see there are several police patrol, so it looks like much under control. I don't see the problem in daytime. But nighttime, when the foot patrol is gone, and they come out, and they're begging money to tourists, and also food. Some of them are just sitting down the corner of their... the signal and blocking the people walking. walking. And while some tourists from outside from the town, they don't know what's going on, so they just feel sorry for the homeless people, looks like they're hungry, so they're giving their leftover restaurant food. But what's happening is, they just eat half through the way in the street, or some of them just...
You need to wind up, please.
And their dog, their dog, eating, and then they don't clean up, they just leave.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Mario.
May I, my district is close to the 500 block. Do you see my name? Will you make an appointment with me, please? In the office over there is Adina, and I'm happy to meet with you, sir, about that issue, okay? Kathy Mario, thank you.
Yes.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Gene Tyburn will be followed by Michael Baker.
Can I give this, so you can peruse this photograph?
You can hand it to the clerk.
Before we start.
Okay, go ahead. Go ahead. We'll, we'll look at, no, please, I'm gonna, I'm starting the time, right here.
It's not fair. I don't need you to see the photograph.
We're, we're looking.
It's not fair.
All right, why don't you sit down? We'll look at the photo. I'll call you after Michael Baker, okay? So why don't you sit down, Mr. Baker, and then Gene Tyburn.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. My name's Michael Baker, CEO for United Boys and Girls Clubs here in Santa Barbara County. Looks like I picked a good day to come. A couple, a couple things that are, on a personal note, that are tying to me is recognizing the librarians. I actually married Marion the librarian, so there you go. For those of you that are musically inclined, I, my wife Marion. Also, I wanted to thank Councilmember Dominguez for coming to the West Side Club and visiting. And we're really excited about, about the renovations that are happening at Bonnet Park. That's going to be a huge, huge help for, and we're going to make sure we maximize the use of that park, trust me. The money will be very well spent. I want to give you an update on the West Side Club. Right now, we currently have 172 members at that club, and we're averaging a little over 90 children a day at that site. That's Monday through Friday, the Saturday numbers, we're getting between 45 and 50 kids on average, and Saturdays, we're seeing those numbers go up as well. One of the things that I talked to you about that's going to happen is, we have studies that show that children that attend Boys and Girls Clubs 52 times a year are twice as likely to graduate high school on time. You know, it's a very challenging area that we're, that we're, that we're dealing with. We want to make sure those kids are on track to graduate on time. And I'm happy to report to you that we are giving out what we call our silver cards to kids that are attending the club 52 times a year. And I'm happy to report to you that tomorrow, at our West Side Club at 3 o'clock, we'll be handing out 61 silver cards to kids that have already attended, have already attended 52 times this year. And we'll be on track for almost all those kids in two months to get their gold card, which is 105 times that they've attended that year. The most important thing for us, what works better than anything else, is reaching more kids more often with deeper impact. So I just want to thank you for your continued support and encourage each and every one of you that can make it tomorrow, 3 o'clock, at the West Side Club. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Tyburn, and then followed by Phil Walker.
Thank you. I, I don't know that I can change any of your minds. I feel like I'm tilting with windmills. But I'm here to, the photograph there is just, just a sample of kind of rules and regulations regarding the trees on private property in this city, that the City Tree Department, not the Parks Department, the City Tree Department treats the public terribly. I have yet to meet anyone who has come in contact with Mr. Downey, unfortunately, who isn't offended by the way he makes them, makes them fearful, and creates vengeance if they don't do what he says. This rule of having to prune your tree, no, you can't prune it more than a third, you can't change the shape of your own tree on your own property, is so offensive to people who love their trees. This is a city full of people who love their trees, and he comes onto their property, tells them how to prune their trees, and then threatens them. I have one case where, because I was given a citation for pruning, and I went to Superior Court and had to go through that miserable situation, but I, I won that case as well as the other ones that I've been cited for. He made the owners of the property under threat that he would not relieve them of the citation unless they came and sat on the curb while he showed them how to prune their own tree, like gangbangers. I drove by and watched him give a lecture to two people, and the reason he got them to do that was, "Well, if you don't do it, you're going to get a citation." They got so frightened, that's what they ended up doing. It's an outrage, the way he's treating the public, and this silly rule that you can't prune your more, your own tree more than one-third, nor can you change the shape of your own tree...
Thank you.
...is ridiculous, and I just wanted to make you people aware of it...
Okay, thank you very much.
...so that something you can get together and talk about...
Thank you, Mr. Tyburn.
...how things are.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's a good question.
Go ahead, Mr. Dominguez.
Was, was there an issue with this tree regarding to this?
That tree, sir, was just pruned. It was pruned six months ago, and the gentleman who pruned it said, "I'm afraid of pruned it any more than that, because Mr. Downey will give me a citation." So the prune, the tree was pruned six months ago, that you can see the wires going through the tree. The owner of the tree says, "I have to prune this tree every six months. He won't let me prune a tree." So he has to prune the tree again. How many of our, our citizens are able...
Okay, thank you.
I'm answering his question.
No, I think you answered the question.
Let me just redirect, and what, what intersection is this? I'm trying to figure out.
At Pedragosa...
I'd be happy to be with you if it's in my district. Pedragosa and...
And State Street. It's on the side of the building.
Kathy or Greg's district? Okay.
It's just an outrage that the public has to go through...
Thank you, Mr. Tyburn.
...all of this, just to prune their own trees.
Okay, thank you. Phil Walker will be followed by Scott Wentz. Bernard Unterman, the final speaker, will be Kenneth Locke.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, members of the City Council. Tree pruning takes me back 40-some years. I worked with the premier landscape tree firm in town, Griffin Tree and Landscape. Measure three times and cut once, right? Okay. A very, very sad tragic event happened in LA overnight. I didn't get the full details of it. A mother, daughter, and their family pet, the, the dog, were run over and killed in a crosswalk in LA West Hills. And I'm seeing close calls, and it's happened in this town, and people are just distracted, 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 and usually, I'm off on Monday, and it seems to happen Monday after work. I, I see so many close calls, and if I were a cop, a police officer, I lay for people on Monday afternoon, because that's when the action is, and it will save lives. And the whole city grid transportation outweigh needs to be rethought. There's too much speed rolling downhill, especially on, oh, Anacapa from Constance on down, people are just flying. De La Vena, there's same, similar downhill run, but the traffic congestion usually will damp the speeds down. Coming out of Sambo's, I eat there, a historical resource, Chad's Sambo's on Cabrillo. I sight down each way to cross the street. I'm parked on the south side of Cabrillo, coming this way. Nobody for 100, 150 yards plus each way. I sight down and look back again to cross the street. Even that doesn't keep you out of the clear, because here, here comes a guy doing a, in a big suburban, flies out of the parking space at the curb, and almost takes me out. So there are, there are not a guarantee, right? Thank you very much.
Scott Wentz.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, Scott Wentz, representing Cars Are Basic. Today at the Finance Committee, they had a report stating that basically by June, you don't, you're not going to have any money to fix the streets. How does that happen? Well, one of the reasons that happens is because you buy something like Cliff Drive in Las Pecitas and add $500,000 to the transportation maintenance program. Then you have special other projects that are going on that require matching grants. So a little bit here, a little bit there, chintzing out of the general fund, and you don't have enough money. You follow practices like slurry seals, that we told you a decade ago wasn't going to work, and it destroys the streets, but, oh, we're fixing the streets. It's about time the management of this city changes, and changes dramatically, particularly in streets. It's been terrible, it's getting worse, and we're looking at Bicycle Master Plan that right now we've counted up $50 million. $50 million? And you can't fix the streets? Something has to be done, and I think it's time you start removing people that are in these decision-making locations and put them out at Dog Catcher, or get rid of them permanently.
Bernard Unterman.
Madam Mayor, City Council members, by now, many Santa Barbarans throughout the city have come to the same conclusion. With one-tenth of the traffic that Mitchell Trenna has and being wider, Sola is safer for bicyclists. Choosing Sola will not impose a hardship on many Santa Barbarans who need to park on Mitchell Trenna. The Sola choice satisfies the highest goal in governance, which is to find the win-win. With Sola Street, everybody wins and nobody loses. Not only do the bicyclists win by having a safer street, the air wins as well. Removing parking on Mitchell Trenna increases driving, doesn't decrease driving. More and more driving, searching for fewer and fewer parking spots. This will increase fumes into our air, so if we want cleaner air, there's another very good reason to choose Sola Street. Thank you.
Kenneth Locke.
My name is Kenneth Locke. Just, I've been doing some tweets, and I have some couple interesting tweets that I've done recently that I want to share with you. I did one, my name is Kenneth Locke of the Tennisance Method, a new teaching method for tennis, that I'm, that I'm offering, is now offering the opportunity for tennis players to become healed, and a holistic health teacher healer. So the idea is that to be a teacher healer requires you to actually be healed, and I'm actually the, kind of the first tennis player to become healed from an unhealthy relationship with tennis, which is recognized in relation to developing of just only one arm, and the idea that this tennisance, the Renaissance of tennis, is based on the next generation, evolution of human consciousness. And then I have one that says, "How wealthy can a mentally unhealthy tennis player become by being the best at being physically unhealthy?" And I said, "Insanely." And then an example I use is Djokovic. So the idea is he's going to be making possibly $100 million through his mentally unhealthy relationship, it's delusional, and then the idea of how it's physically unhealthy. So just to, to give you an indication of just how bad off the situation is, and the idea is that, I raised the question, should I be upset with people who are standing in the way of me bringing this new teaching method to the tennis community? I just, I just wish everybody the best, the best. Thank you.
Okay, that concludes public comment, and we're on to the consent calendar. There's some items to read.
Item number five, adoption of ordinance for the approval of extension for the South Coast Energy Efficiency Partnership Agreement, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the Public Works Director to execute a Third Amendment to the 2010 through 2015 Energy Partnership Agreement between Southern California Edison, the Southern California Gas Company, and the City of Santa Barbara to cover the 2016 transition period. Item number six, introduction of ordinance to increase loan amount for wastewater plant upgrades from $20 million to $31,388,033, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, authorizing the approval and execution by the Public Works Director of Amendment Number One to the installment sale agreement for the Air Process Improvement Project Clean Water State Revolving Fund Project Number 7857-110, Agreement Number 14-809-550. Item number seven, introduction of ordinances approving sales of excess city lands related to the Cota Street Bridge Replacement Project, recommending that council introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute the land purchase agreement escrow instructions and grant deed for the sale of certain city excess land located at 221 West Cota Street to Serenthe Bell in the amount of $701,550, and introduce and subsequently adopt by reading of title only an ordinance of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, approving and authorizing the city administrator to execute the land purchase agreement escrow instructions and grant deed for the sale of certain city excess land located at 230 West Cota Street to Ashley Nicole Mines and Brad Travis Moore in the amount of $736,032. Item number 11, resolution to vacate an offer of pedestrian easement at 109 West Ortega Street, adopt by reading, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, ordering the summary vacation of the irrefutable offer of a pedestrian easement over a portion of the real property, commonly known as 109 West Ortega Street, as described in said irrefutable offer. Item number 13, Measure A, Five-Year Local Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2017 through 2021 Public Hearing, recommending that council adopt by reading of title only a resolution of the Council of the City of Santa Barbara, adopting the Measure A Five-Year Local Program of Projects for Fiscal Years 2017 through 2021.
Thank you. Without further objection, we'll wait for the reading. We do have a public comment speaker slip for item 13. That was the Measure A item that was just asked. Any other items to pull from the consent?
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Yes.
I appreciate hearing a, a bit of staff report on that item 13.
Okay, so why don't we get the public comment out, and then we can have your questions answered at that point. Mr. Wentz, come on up.
Madam Mayor, members of the Council, Scott Wentz, representing Cars Are Basic. If you take a look at the staff report, the amount of money that's being put into alternative transportation, it outweighs street maintenance by hundreds of thousands of dollars. Yet you say that you don't have enough money to fix the streets, and as of June, you're going to be out of money. And then you're going to be coming back to the citizens wanting a tax, because we have to fix the streets, when the decision-making process has been to go for alternative transportation, and you're chintzing the budget. Like I said earlier, a little bit here, a little bit there, matching funds here, matching funds there, you don't have enough money. These are really bad decisions. And if you take a look out on the streets, it's spring, spring break now, what happened to all those bicyclists that were around when the Bicycle Master Plan was up for discussion? They're gone, because the majority of them are students or younger people that have the ability to go on vacation. You don't see the people out there today. You didn't see them last week either. So it means that the people that you want for alternative transportation are not going there. MTD lost 104 million, excuse me, 1.4 million riders. Come on. It's time to make rational decisions, and making the heavy weight to alternative transportation when you can't fix the streets is bad management.
Okay, Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, I would like to hear a little bit of staff's summary on that very question. The, what we're seeing in the attachment two is this is a higher amount of money being devoted to alternative transportation expenditures, as opposed to local street and transportation projects. So I'd appreciate staff giving us a summary of that, and describing, and describe to us the method by which that funding occurs, and are... the method by which that funding occurs, and are there options for changing that?
Thank you, Councilmember White. Madam Mayor, Members of City Council, my name is Brian Demore. I'm the city engineer with the City of Santa Barbara Public Works. And you're looking at Attachment Two, the table, which shows the alternative transportation expenditures, the $1.4 million, I believe. And there's a more detailed breakdown of that, which is provided in Exhibit B from the resolution, and that's at the very bottom under Section B. So Rebecca, if you can slide that up a little bit, you'll see the breakdown on that. And just for everyone's information, the alternative transportation includes all forms of transportation other than by vehicle, so sidewalks and sidewalk repair is actually part of that, and so that's listed down at the bottom. But the two biggest line items are a contribution from the city to Easy Lift and to the Shuttlebus Program, and that's been something that's been brought to the Finance Committee's attention as we are exploring options to provide more funding for streets capital maintenance. And then the other three items are basically just capital and operations maintenance for sidewalks. So we believe that maintaining our sidewalks is, I don't want to say as important or equally important, but it is also very important, just like it is with pavement maintenance. So I don't believe those three line items are something that should be discussed for any kind of cuts, but I know the other two, those are contracts that the city has, and they expire at the end of next fiscal year, so June of 2017. I think there's already been some discussions about how to handle that, but it's not going to be something that one person alone will be able to decide on. I think that's a greater issue that affects a lot of different elements of the community.
Well, Madam Mayor, that is for sure. I mean, obviously, there are no easy choices here. However, from at least what I'm interested in, I'm interested in many aspects of this, and as you indicated, this is the core topic of conversation at Finance Committee at this point. We're having a series of meetings about paving and about our streets. And I think my question here is, I'm hearing, first of all, that the city is committed to the shuttle bus, and as the shuttle bus program, is that the mitigation for the Granada Garage? Is that that piece there? Or is this simply, not simply, is this a contract that has been let and is then completed next, the end of next fiscal year?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember White, Rebecca Bjork, Public Works Director. The shuttle bus program does include both the mitigation for the Granada Garage as well as the state street and waterfront shuttles, and it's funded in a number of different places. And I'm not entirely sure which component the Measure A is, but of course, in looking at that, we look at it sort of in its totality. We do have that mitigation requirement that we have to continue to meet. It was originally met through RDA. It's been transferred. I just don't recall whether it's transferred to downtown parking or to this program.
Okay. And that will be coming, and so that will be coming back to council during the budget hearings? Would that be the opportunity to look at these more carefully? I mean, are these funding sources restricted so that there's less choice here, or were these simply choices that were made in the past and now are renewable or revisitable at this point?
I think largely, at this point in time, we're working off of the past history and looking, working closely with the Finance Committee to see where council would like to make changes to past policy. So this really is somewhat of a status quo measure of projects. You can see that it's largely operational, does go a long way to funding sidewalk funding, which is about our only source of sidewalk funding in our current budget. We can certainly talk about it at the budget hearing. Our proposed budget probably will be fairly status quo, but there's nothing to keep us from moving away from that as we go forward.
Okay. And then on that mitigation piece, I would appreciate hearing back when we do discuss it. What options might there be, for example, to change that to an overriding consideration be one tactic that may be possible in order to make that a choice rather than something mandatory for the future? Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I would only add that, you know, I think, I understand Mr. Wentz's point, that he believes that we're not focusing enough of our resources on pavement maintenance. And I think probably everybody would agree that we need to spend more on pavement maintenance, but I don't know that, as staff described, looking specifically at these numbers, you know, with the $240,000 for Easy Lift, that service is critically important to homebound seniors. The shuttle bus program's an enormously important part of the downtown viability as an economic engine for the entire funding of the city, having the ability for folks to park in one parking lot and go on the shuttle bus to other parking lots. As staff really carefully described, the sidewalk infill and access ramp programs, that's basic infrastructure. A sidewalk is as critical as a road. It's really the same kind of a thing. So if you actually look at the numbers here that are on this chart, you don't see excessive spending on alternative transportation. Now, the point that Mr. Wentz is trying to make, that we need to spend more money on infrastructure, specifically on pavement maintenance, is absolutely true. As Councilmember White mentioned, the Finance Committee is getting into this in great detail. You know, the big picture about this is that staff has told us, in order to improve the pavement quality from a level of 63, which is teetering on the edge of it getting really bad and becoming enormously expensive to repair, and bringing it up to a level of 70, which is a sustainable number, would take $12 million a year for three years and $8 million a year for the next seven. That's how much money it would cost just on the pavement side, and we are currently budgeting $2 million a year. So there's about a $70 million deficit to address the pavement quality over the next 10 years. There is no way cutting Easy Lift and the shuttle that we can generate $70 million. It's just impossible. That is, that's simple math. Anybody with a spreadsheet can look at this any way they want and know that that's not possible. So the work that the Finance Committee is doing is, I think, trying to expose these facts to the light of day. We've had three meetings so far, we're going to have a number of meetings more, to just make these choices clear and apparent to the public. And, you know, the ultimate decision about what to do about that, whether we do seek additional funding, or, which seems inevitable, will result from those discussions.
Mario.
Thank you, Mayor Schneider. I'd also like to thank Mr. Wentz. Your opinions are informed, and not everyone who comes to the podium brings that breadth of really looking at the numbers. So thanks. I would like to ask that in the budget process, that we do look at the reduction in the utility users tax, because that struck me in the, in reading the report, and it seems like, I'm not sure what the response to it is going to be in terms of making up that revenue. I know that our Public Works Department is looking at increasing efficiencies, in particular in the Streets Division. And I've been talking to some of the employees who have really great ideas about how to make it all work better. So there's a lot of ways to address what we're talking about, which is a serious issue. And then I'd like to make the point, I don't think it's oversimplifying to say that when you have good alternative transportation choices, people will walk or bike or use the bus, and that removes single occupancy cars from the road, so there's less wear and tear on the road. I think that's just a larger, not philosophical, I mean, that's what, the reason why we support all modes of transportation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Are the titles from Measure A, are they our own descriptors, meaning alternative transportation expenditures, maintenance improvement, construction of roadways and bridges, and the capital improvement projects? Because, and I ask because I think when people generally hear alternative transportation, they're thinking operational costs for MTD, for example, and that's nowhere in it, and in fact, that's a separate item altogether through Measure A. But Easy Lift and Shuttlebus program fits, but I wouldn't necessarily think capital upgrades to sidewalks count as, quote, "alternative transportation." I don't think that's what people come to mind. Can you let me, what do you, yeah?
Madam Mayor, John Wasick, Principal Civil Engineer for Public Works Department. The categories marked A1, 2, and B1, those are set by SB CAG.
Okay.
SB CAG sets them. So that's the framework from which they have, the local agencies have a level playing field to come from. And then sidewalk actually falls under the alternative transportation category.
Right. That makes sense, though, that everyone who's a Measure A recipient has the same categories. There's consistency. Perhaps that's something to bring up with SB CAG on having a subset under alternative transportation, capital versus operations, or something like that to make that distinction, but that's a conversation for another day. Mr. Dominguez, and then Mr. White.
This Measure A chart, proposed City of Santa Barbara Program of Projects by Category, the 939 number under fiscal year 18, where does that number come from?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Dominguez, the 939 under fiscal year 18 is the amount of capital projects, so that would be, that would be pavement primarily. I don't recall another capital expenditure other than pavement for that year, but I do have a chart that I can refer to if you like.
Just for further clarification, we haven't set the FY '18 budget yet, so that's just based on some projections of revenues from SB CAG, and then also our own projections of operational costs, and whatever's left over is what's available for capital. And I've just checked the chart, and that is for pavement, that is designated for pavement maintenance.
And that's, so that's figures, so that's $939,000?
Correct.
And how does that reconcile with the numbers we saw today at Finance Committee?
Yeah, so Measure A is just a subset of the revenue source that we have for streets capital, so this would be plugged into the UUT and gas tax. That money's pooled together in a separate fund, and together between the two, we'd be looking at roughly $2 million for pavement maintenance on an annual basis, assuming everything stays status quo moving forward.
And this is a non-binding measure, then, a non-binding exhibit, because it seems like this is attached to the resolution that we're going to be voting on?
Yeah, this is an annual program of projects that we bring to council, and then...
So is this binding on us?
I don't believe that it is. I think it's a plan.
And I'm curious, because Section Two says, "The City of Santa Barbara certifies that it will include in its budget an amount of local discretionary funding for local streets and roads sufficient to comply with the maintenance of effort requirements contained in the ordinance." So it doesn't... Doesn't necessarily require us, then, to meet these minimums?
I don't think within each category. The only thing that you pointed on there was the maintenance of effort, and that is set based on a baseline established by SB CAG at the beginning of Measure A, which they looked at a report that we submit to the State Controller's Office, and there's a line item called "General Fund Money is Used for Streets Purposes." What they call general fund might be a little bit different than what we typically call general fund because it includes UUT. But we need to maintain that level of expenditure plus the growth of Measure A as we move forward outside of this program of projects. So this, the whole purpose of Measure A was not to supplant existing funds used for streets purposes.
So was the 939, then, it came from our need or our projected revenue?
It's based on the projected revenue, and then subtracting out our operational costs that are built into the Measure A program. That's what's available for capital.
Okay. Thank you.
Sure.
Mr. White.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I supported, I have, I have supported and do support every single item on this list over the years, and I've also supported providing more funding to, which would have been in place this year had my hopes been realized. So I don't want to be saying that I'm criticizing Easy Lift, criticizing the Shuttlebus program at all. We have difficult decisions to make. When I saw this as a consent agenda item, I felt like it needed, just because our community needs to be seeing this dire situation that we find ourselves in around our infrastructure, and so that it just, to have this be one of 10 items that we just, all those in favor say aye, and it goes by, I think it's just, it warrants having conversations repeatedly to remind ourselves and remind our constituents of the situation that we find ourselves in. And so, believe me, I'm not establishing a value judgment on, I picked those two because they're larger items there. There's also a million dollars towards managing our trees, and they're just, these are things that we all value in this city, and we're just in a difficult triage situation. And paving our streets is pretty darn high on our triage, and that's the one that we're, we're, obviously, is taking the biggest hit as well. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Okay, does anyone have a motion for the consent calendar? Moved by White, second by Hotchkiss. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, that passes, and so we move on to item number, actually, report from the Finance Committee, Mr. Hart, which...
I think we actually gave that through the conversation on the previous item.
Okay. Then item number 19.
Proposed fiscal year 2017 water rates.
Okay, Ms. Ford and Mr. Hagmark.
Good afternoon, Madam Mayor, Members of the Council. My name is Kelly Dyer. I'm the Water Supply Manager in the Public Works Department, and I will be presenting proposed fiscal year 2017 water rates. First, I'll give some background on the rate study, go over the financial plan, which is our expenditures and projected revenues, then review the proposed water rates for each of the customer classes and tiers, and then give some examples of what the total bill looks like for different levels of water use, and also compare with our neighboring water agencies. And then we'll go over the proposed schedule going forward, and then be asking for council action on sending out the rate notice as well as setting a date for the public hearing. We have been working with our expert rate consultant, Reftelis Financial Consultants. They are the consultant that helped us in 2013 to develop a comprehensive water rate study that really restructured our water rates at the time. After that study was complete, then we began the drought cycle that we're currently in, and we've had to update our water rate model to incorporate the financial impacts of the drought. We have increased costs as we move to different sources of water that we're relying on as our surface water becomes depleted. Reftelis' scope also primarily is to develop rates for FY '17 that meet Prop 218 requirements. There's a cost of service analysis to make sure that the costs that we're recovering from rates do not exceed the cost to provide the water service. So, and then that we also have a requirement for the California Urban Water Conservation Council, the city is a signatory to an MOU, and one of the best management practices is that 30% or less of your revenue comes from fixed charges. The other 70% comes from volumetric charges. That's to encourage conservation. And our understanding is that if, if we don't meet that requirement, we're potentially not eligible for grants and loans from the state. So we have always maintained compliance with that requirement. It does present a challenge with financial management because the majority of our costs are actually fixed. And so when the majority of our revenue is volumetric and we see dramatic changes in water use, we'll have, we have a challenge with our declining revenues and still have increased costs with the drought that we need to meet. So I will talk more about that later in the presentation and what that means. This chart is part of the monthly drought updates that everyone's been seeing. I wanted to show it because our water rates are so closely tied to our water sources and... I wanted to show it because our water rates are so closely tied to our water sources. And we have had the five driest years in history. We're in very difficult, very challenging circumstances right now. We're currently in the fifth year. And as we look forward to next year for fiscal year 17 water rates, that would be year six. And I have this arrow here showing what that water supply mix looks like for next year. You can see it's dramatically changed from five years ago when we were primarily using surface water. And so now we've got D-SAL, supplemental water purchases, and groundwater as our primary water sources. Those are all much more expensive than our surface water with the combined total cost of service. At the same time, we are projecting a 35% conservation level. And so the FY '17 water rate study is based on this supply mix. And to put it simply, droughts are expensive. It's very unfortunate that the drought has lasted this long. But we are trying to limit cost as much as we can, where we can. This chart shows the projected water use by, well, actually, this is not projected. This is our normal water use before the drought started. I wanted to show where water is used within our service area among the different customer classes. This plays into the volumetric charges in the water rates. On the very left part of the chart is our single-family residential water use. So you can see before the drought, this was really our largest water use within the city. We have the most number of accounts in the single-family residential customer class. The blue, first, let me describe the colors. So the blue is tier one, the green is tier two, and the red is tier three water use. Over to the right, this is multifamily residential, commercial and industrial. And then we have dedicated irrigation meters, which make up a very small portion of our overall demand. We have residential and commercial, parks, rec and school, and agriculture, and then recycled water. With a 35% reduction in demand, I can say everybody is reducing their water use. And we've used recent trends in our water use that we've actually been experiencing since stage three was declared. I think our cumulative conservation is roughly 36% right now. So we are using trends from actual water use to project what water use will be for next year. And you can see that the tier three water use is just about gone in the single-family residential. There's very little left. And we've also seen reduction in multifamily and commercial, little to no tier two usage in the irrigation accounts.
Ms. Dyer, going back to the last slide, when you compare that lime green to the blue, and I know you're not Big Brother, but can you tell when a single-family home uses more water because there's more landscaping or because it's in a denser area where there's more people living in the house? Is that a fair question or it's not?
We can't really, if they have a regular meter, if they have a dedicated irrigation meter, that's, they're assigned a water budget based on their irrigated area. But when it's a regular irrigation meter, we don't know exactly how they're using water on their property.
Thank you.
Councilmember Murillo? Yeah, we don't collect personal information as to the usage of that water on private property.
So for fiscal year 2017 water rate study, we are basing it on 35% conservation. And we have extended our assumptions on when the drought will end to FY '18. This shows our financial projections from FY '16 through FY '18. And I wanted to focus on FY '16, the current fiscal year. So our D-SAL expenses are about $600,000. That's mainly the interest on the loan. Capital is $8.2 million. Operating expenses are $36.2 million. And debt service is $4.2 million. Total expenditures at $49.2. That's our projected expenditures for this year. Our revenue is projected to be lower, $45.7 million. And this year, we were able to make up that revenue imbalance through one-time reimbursements. We are receiving loans for the recycled water tertiary plant upgrades and for the comb emergency pump project. And then there's also expenditures that we initially incurred on the D-SAL project that can now be put on the loan. So the combination of all of those reimbursements will help to offset the revenue imbalance for this year. Next year, we would have to make up for that revenue imbalance in order to preserve our reserve balances. So the difference is the $3.5 million revenue imbalance that we're currently in.
We were able to bring in just over $2 million in grants to help offset those two projects, the tertiary project and then the comb emergency pump project. So just, those have been significantly helpful in helping to minimize the use of reserves.
So for next year, our expenses for D-SAL will go up to $5.3 million. That assumes it's in full operation. Capital expenses about the same, $8 million. This includes $4.7 million for the main replacement program. Everything in our capital budget really has been scaled back quite significantly since we began the drought. Our operating expenses are $34.9 million. This includes $2 million for supplemental water purchases should we need them if the drought continues and be looking for additional water purchases to try and postpone any decisions on expanding D-SAL next year. Debt service, $5 million, and total expenditures at $53.2 million. So there is an increase in our expenditures, our projected expenditures for FY '17 primarily because of drought-related expenses for supplemental water purchases. And then also, we've got the D-SAL plan in full operation. This is in graphical form. The bars are expenditures. So the blue bar is the operating expenses. Purple is debt service. Orange is D-SAL. The D-SAL costs are the combined debt service and operating expenses. And capital is green. So in FY '16, you can see that our revenues are less than our expenditures. That's the $3.5 million. And then our expenditures in FY '17 go up by about $4 million. The lines are the projected revenues. So in FY '17, the red line is our projected revenue under existing FY '16 water rates. And with increased conservation that we're going to need next year, our revenues would go down. That's because the majority of our revenues are from volumetric charges. And we would not be able to meet our operating and debt service obligations. So we are proposing to increase rates to generate revenues that are, that's shown in the green line. And the difference is a 21% increase in the revenue generated.
So that is now using reserves, as you said. And how much, what's the number?
Of, on reserves?
Right.
This chart shows our projected reserve balance. We'd be using about $5 million from reserves.
Okay. So, right, I'm just talking for, so $5 million of reserves. And if we didn't use, because I know the last time we were here, we're saying, "Let's not use reserves." What would have been, instead of 21%, what would have been the rate increase?
Madam Mayor, it would have been in the order of 40% to 50% increase.
Okay. So, and I'll get to the flyer later, but I think that context is extremely important when we're communicating with folks because frankly, people are getting a little rate hike weary. So go to the next, go to the slide you were just at before. What, so the capital piece, how much, well, we're using $5 million reserves. What would that leave in the reserve balance after using the $5 million? What's left?
$13 million.
Okay. And if, so go back to the other slide, sorry. The green line, which is including the use of the $5 million of reserves, so it's paying for part of the capital, part of that green bar?
Correct.
Okay. What would, how much reserves would we have to use just to get to paying our operation and maintenance, our debt service, and the D-SAL cost? So not including the little bit of the green? Do you know, did you calculate that?
I'm eyeballing, so you're asking, I believe what you're asking is if we don't have any capital expenses?
I'm saying using reserves for all the capital expenses. How much more reserves would we need to use? And I'm asking that because that would obviously reduce the rate increase. And we're increasing funds so much because it hasn't rained and because there's conservation and we're not, you know, getting the revenues we need through the conservation efforts. And I'm kind of skipping, jumping to the chase here, but I think if we are looking at using reserves, I'm just concerned that year after year of 20%, 30% increases, this next one is really going to start breaking the bank. And when we're saying, "We've already paid for the D-SAL construction, but now we need to do extra bits," and then, you know, other things that we want to add to it. So, am I making sense here, I hope?
Yes, Madam Mayor. We were just looking at the charts and it appears to be about $3 million that we would need additional out of reserves to fully fund the capital.
So we go from use of $5 million reserves to $8 million in reserves?
Right.
And then we'd be left with, from, instead of $15 million, down to 12? Instead of $13 million, down to 10? Okay. Okay. And do we know what percentage increase that would mean using $8 million of reserves instead of 5? Instead of 21%, it would go down to what? Do you know that?
I don't know that off the top of my head.
Well, you don't need to...
You're looking to reduce the green line by $3 million? Reduce the revenue recovered from rates by $3 million in order to, I guess, so my question is, would you like to hold the capital expenditures?
No, I want to spend the money, just use more reserves, to do what we need in capital, thereby reducing the rate increase from 21% down to a lower number. Mr. Samario?
Yeah, Madam Mayor, members of council, Bob Samario, Finance Director. One of the things we have to consider or keep in mind is that we have a debt service coverage requirement. So we have to generate a certain amount of surplus. So we can't propose a budget that essentially is balanced, an operating budget. We have to propose a budget that is generating surplus because that's the amount of money we need to cover our debt service. So to use all of our reserves for all the capital program or $8 million, we would not be able to meet our debt service coverage requirements. As it is right now, we're going to have to sort of establish and identify the $5 million reserves we're using as part of our rate stabilization fund. So that's going to allow us to treat that reserve as revenue, but we only have $5 million in that account. To use an additional 3 for capital and thereby reducing rates, I don't think we're going to be able to be in compliance with the debt service coverage requirements going into next year's budget.
That's different than the purple line that you're talking about here?
Yes.
Okay. And the 10, having 10 million in reserves does not give you the portfolio that you need in order to...
Yeah, it's a question of revenues. We have to have revenues exceed expenditures by a certain amount so that we generate some debt service coverage. And if we only have revenues exactly matching our expenditures in simple terms, we're not generating enough surplus for coverage.
Got it. Okay, all right. Okay, thank you. Sorry to interrupt, but you were at a key point, so go ahead.
So our reserve balance for next year, we've already talked about this a bit. So we'd be projecting to use $5 million from reserves and end the year about $6 million below policy. We will come back to council during the budget process in June and talk about ways that we might be able to minimize use of reserves if there's any projects that we can hold off and spending will be somewhat limited. Certainly would help if the drought ended. We would have fewer expenses. Debt coverage ratio, this is what Mr. Samario was referring to. We do have a requirement that our, we may have, that our debt coverage ratio be 125%. That's our net operating revenue divided by our debt service. The proposed FY '17 rates are projected to provide 129% coverage ratio. We did have some issues meeting this ratio in FY '15. We need to demonstrate that we'll be able to meet that coverage going forward.
Mr. Dominguez?
The, I didn't understand the last explanation. Is the use of reserves a not considered use of revenue in the debt coverage ratio calculation?
Correct. It's not considered revenue.
Okay. So we could, 129, you've kind of built in a 4% cushion. Is that why it's not just down to the 125? Because we did have a problem in 2015? Is that why we've gone above what we need?
Councilmember Dominguez, yes, that's, it's a cushion, but what really, what was driving the revenue increase was to, in our last council meeting, we talked about a 21% increase in revenue. And so we held that, and this has turned out to not be driving it. We could lower it a little bit and project to meet the 125% coverage. But as I mentioned earlier, we did have some issues in FY '15 meeting our debt coverage. If people conserve even more, our revenues are lower than planned and we might not meet our coverage. We do have ways, we do have ways to manage that with our rate stabilization fund, but we would be somewhat vulnerable if we lowered this much further.
Can you use your reserves to pay down some of the debt if you do run into that situation?
It's our coverage ratio, the interesting thing about this is we're able to meet our debt payments. This coverage ratio is a part of our covenant of our agreement for the water, our water supply agreement. So we're still able to meet our debt payments. It's this ratio that's required as a disclosure to our bondholders.
And how much debt do we have?
It's about, the non-D-SAL debt service is about $5 million. And the D-SAL debt service will be 3.2, which begins in FY '18.
So it's actually less than our reserves at this point?
The amount is less than the reserves. The debt, annual debt payments is what I was referring to.
Yeah, the total debt, however, is in the $60 million range, something like that? Right.
The D-SAL plan is $55 million. I'd have to check what the remaining balance is for all of our other loans.
Something like that, anyway.
I would guess that cost is probably closer to 80 when you include the CATER ozone project, now D-SAL. So there's a lot of money hanging out there.
Mr. Clon, did you want to say anything?
What is the reserve policy limit?
The amount that we keep within reserves, the target, the red line is our council policy reserves. And that's determined based on, there's three policy reserves. One is the disaster reserve, which is 15% of our operating budget. The contingency reserve is 10% of the operating budget. And then there's a capital reserve, which is the minimum of three years of your capital budget or your, a percentage of your net assets. So that, those combined targets make up this red line of the council policy reserves.
And that's a separate reserve budget from our general reserve?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so now going into the rates design and how the costs are recovered from the different customer classes and tiers. This was, the rates were determined based on a cost of service analysis. We have a water rate model that our rate consultant did this analysis. And then we also have our California Urban Water Conservation Council best management practices where our fixed, our revenue from fixed charges can be no more than 30% of our total revenue. Okay, so these are the proposed fixed rates. And because of that cap of the 30%, we're seeing a 4% increase in the fixed charges. This is something that affects everyone who has a water meter. Most of our customers have a 5/8 inch meter, which is about a dollar increase for fiscal year 17. fiscal year '17. Because there's a 4% increase in the fixed charges, but-
Excuse me, is that a monthly change you're pointing to there?
Correct.
Thank you.
Because our total revenue increase was a 21%, there's going to be a more dramatic increase in the volumetric charges with only 4% increase in the fixed charges. So I'll go through the volumetric charges and then at the end I'll go through the impacts to the total bill, which combines the two. All right. So starting with single-family residential tier one, our current rate is $4.20. It would go to $4.89, 69 cent increase. Tier two would go from $8.51 to $12.97, $4.46 increase. Tier three is currently $18.59 and would go to $24.27 for a $5.68 increase. The multifamily residential rates mirror the single-family residential rates. Commercial and industrial tier one would go from $6.53 to $7.88 for a $1.35 increase. Tier two would go from $15.24 to $23.94 for an $8.70 increase. These are dedicated irrigation meters, which have water budgets. Irrigation rate for residential and commercial is an extension of the tier two and tier three rate for a regular domestic meter. So the tier one rate is going from $8.51 to $12.97 for a $4.46 increase. And tier two is $18.59 to $24.27 for a $5.68 increase. Parks, rec and schools is a 7 cent increase from $3.70 to $3.77. Tier two goes from $18.59 to $24.27 for a $5.68 increase. And irrigation for agriculture tier one is $2.43 to $3.42, 99 cent increase. And then tier two is the same as the others. Recycled water would, oops, I'm sorry, go from $2.96 to $3.02 for a 6 cent increase. And then all of the outside city rates would have an additional cost of service of 30, So this shows the combined impacts of the fixed charges and the volumetric charges on the total bill for a single-family residential. This gives a snapshot of three different levels of water use. So for a low water user using four units a month, the total bill would go up by $3.77 a month. For a moderate user using 10 units a month, the total bill would go up from $91 to $122, that's a $30.53 increase. And for a high water user using 20 units a month, it would go from $217 to $297 for an $80 increase. This is an example. I wanted to back up the last several years. We've had a lot of changes, as I mentioned, with our water supplies and our water rates. So before the drought started, our average water user for single-family was using 12 units a month. And so at the top row, if they had not changed their water use at all, you can see that their bill would go, would more than double. It was over 100% increase from $67.81 to $147.82. For someone who has reduced their water use, you know, 20% in FY '15 to 25% in FY '16 to 35% in FY '17, their bill goes up by $28 compared with the $80 increase if they had not reduced their water use. So that's about a 41% increase over the three-year period, about 13% increase per year if you just averaged it out. This chart shows our rates compared with our neighboring water agencies. We gathered information that was available for projected increases. Of course, this could change, but for right now, our, our low water user is still among the lowest with Galita Water District. And then Montecito and Carpinteria have the higher, higher bills for low water users. Moderate water use, we're right in the ballpark. Everyone's sort of in the same range of bills for 10 units per month. And then for high water use, we will have the highest bill for someone using 20 units of water use. And something to keep in mind is our distribution of water use is very different from our neighbors as well. We may not have as many people going, using 20 units a month as our neighbors, depending on the agency. So this shows our proposed schedule for the water rates. Today, we're presenting the proposed rates and requesting, in the next slide, I'll be requesting council action on the rate notices. We're planning to mail them on April, by April 18th. That begins the 45-day noticing period before the public hearing, which would be June 14th. And then rate adoption would be June 21st and rates become effective July 1st. So at this point, I'll ask if there's any questions, but we are requesting that council set a public hearing date for June 20, June 14th, 2016 and direct staff to send notice, the Prop 218 notices.
Great. I don't, Mr. Walker left here at a public comment speaker slip. There are no other public comment speaker slips? Nope? Okay. So I'll open and close the public hearing. It's to the council for questions and comments at this point. Mr. Dominguez?
Do you know what the median water bill is for the city residents?
I know what the average is, which, the average water use is about nine units right now. So it's that roughly the $91.35. Our median is, our median water use is probably closer to seven or eight. So it's on that order of magnitude.
Somewhere in the $60, $70 a month?
Roughly.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Quick question. What percent of our residents are low water and moderate and high? Do we figure it that way? Can you tell me that?
Currently, our, we have about 65% of our customers are using 10 units or less.
65% or 10 units?
Are 10 units or less.
Thank you.
Mr. White?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, first of all, just once again, we're confronted with a, obviously a dire situation. We have the, no pun intended, but we have, but we do have the D-SAL plant that's, that's getting built. We have Kachuma, which is going down. It's going to be in July and August. It's going to be, much of the water in there is going to be emptied out all at once for, for the downstream users. The, the import pipeline is, is now at capacity and the well system is in full production. In fact, what Mr. Hagmark calls, we are having peak well year. This is the year when we're going to be pulling the most water out of our, out of our well system. And that's not been an easy, it is not being an easy task. I say all that, I just, I want to, once again, command our water staff for handling all of these different, difficult situations. And here, part of it is managing the finances around it is no easy task either. So I really, I, I really appreciate the work that you're doing and your guidance, your stable guidance in, in going forward with this. I certainly support moving forward with this. I appreciate the mayor's looking for a way to soften the blow, but I do believe this is our best way forward. And we need to stay in close contact with our community on this. They're doing a remarkable job of conserving and it's going to need to stay this way for the foreseeable future. And I think an important ingredient here is that with our D-SAL plant going forward, and we're going to hear more about this, we have a drought update. Is it next week? Is that right? In two weeks? All right, I'll just hold off on that for, for now. But in any case, I'm, I'm ready to make a motion on this if you like, Madam Mayor.
Go ahead.
All right. I would move the staff recommendation that, that we set a public hearing for June 14th to consider the rate increases and to direct staff to, to send a notice of public hearing to customers informing them of the hearing.
Second.
Okay. Move by White, second by Hart. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, the only thing I'd add is, you know, I have heard from a number of people who are also feeling the stress of the increased water bills and they're starting to get frustrated and they've been cooperating and doing the right thing. And, you know, there's really isn't anything else that can be done. I think as Ms. Deere said really clearly at the beginning of her presentation, we're replacing relatively low-cost water with very expensive water. And it's just that simple. And until it rains, we're not going to have low-cost water. And so this, this is just simple math. You know, we have to have the revenues to make the system work and it isn't a reflection on what people are doing in the way of conservation or not doing enough in the way of conservation or in any way a judgment on what folks are doing. They're doing the right thing. We're doing exactly what we asked them to do. And they're just, this is out of our control. This is the weather. And until it rains, we're going to have, we're going to be in this box. So it's a, it's, it's not a choice, it's just reality.
I would just add, just to that point, that if they didn't do what we were asking them to do, it'd even be worse in terms of costs. So as crazy as that sounds, but Ms. Mario?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'll be supporting the, the motion, at the same time expressing gratitude to our residents for their conservation efforts and those efforts continue. I'm proud to announce that the West Side will be looking at, with the city and the Sweetwater Collaborative, some classes to help people save water in their landscaping and other household activities. And I will acknowledge too, that the city of Santa Barbara sells water and this is the reality of the water situation in California. And for people who didn't know that we live in a desert and borrow our water from other places, they're catching up now that that is the reality of California and coastal California. So I, I also express gratitude to our staff for their hard work in this difficult situation. Thank you, Madam Mayor.
I'll just, I know the notice has to have a number of things as required by Prop 218. What we're saying here and how it'll be reflected in the general public and communicated, I think there's still a gap. And I know we're doing everything we can to reduce the rate increase as much as we can under the circumstances and under the law, but it's still going to feel like, my gosh, this is the third or fourth year of double, you know, major double-digit increases. So since, especially since we are using reserves and we are, we're trying to lessen the blow, there's nothing in that notice that says that. And I'm wondering if there is room to explain, you know, we are using $5 million of reserves in order to go from a 50% increase down to a 21% increase. Might sound a little better at least to show that we're acknowledging that this is a significant issue and, and that, you know, and, and the note that says, please note these rates included in the notice are the highest possible rates that could go into effect. We know that means if something should come up between now and then, we could lower it. I don't know if that's implicit in what that sentence is and maybe, you know, it's possible with grant funding or if it rains or, you know, it might go, you know, it might go down. Something to that extent to show that we're understanding and appreciative of what's going on here and not just saying, we're just going to raise rates. Because that is starting, I'm starting to get comments a little more than usual, even though people understand that we're in a very significant extraordinary drought situation. So it's a, it's a busy page, I know, and I know there's requirements here, but if there's some way to massage that kind of wording, that I think could help at least a little bit and at least we can point to it. So, Mr. Dominguez?
So I have a question. It's hopefully an optimistic question, but I'd like to know what happens in the future if and when we're out of the drought and we have plenty of water and our cost of water goes down? Will we be able to, or what will happen with these rates? Will they be used? I know we had, we're below the reserves and it sounds like we have a lot of debt. Will the rates stay at the same level until we've paid down the debt and rebuilt the reserves? Will they instantly drop? Will that come back to us?
There's a, there's a lot of factors that play into that and, and we are anticipating these will need to stay in place for some period of time, even following the end of this drought, because we are looking at, we've incurred significant water debt in which we have to pay back through some means, probably buying water and returning it. And we also have the usage. A lot of it depends on usage. We've made some, some assumptions into here that once the drought is over, it will take about five years for the community to return to some new normal of water usage. That is really what's going to drive what happens with the rates. If usage comes up quickly, then rates can actually come down appropriately. But we also have a groundwater basin that's going to need to rest for a while. That's one of our cheapest sources of water. And so while we're resting that, we're going to be relying on imported water to kind of bridge that gap. And so again, and then also the impacts to Kachuma and what it's going to, its safe field is going to be after this drought. And so there is so many factors. I don't want to set expectations that as soon as the drought's over, we're going to be able to drop rates back down to where we were before.
Yeah, and having studied this issue now for a few months, I realize there's, there's a chance that we'll have to raise the rates again and we've discussed that today and that, and that really concerns me. As has been said up here before, citywide people have been making great efforts to conserve, just to talk specifically about my district and areas in the city like my district. My district has a large number of low-income folks and a lot of housing authority properties, probably almost half are in my district. And those people are really taking this very seriously and concerned. And it's good to see that the, the impact at the low level is, is smaller, that this is not a regressive tax that's going to harm those people the most. Some of the groups that are hurt the most are the people that have gardens or old fruit trees, because that uses a lot of water. And even once you conserve inside your household, it's the outside water that's hard to, to come by. So I'm concerned both with the, the cost it's going to impose now and then a potential future cost if, if nature's not kind to us in the next few years. We've talked about infrastructure tax today with streets and a potential tax that's going to also hit my district harder than other districts and their ability to rebound or change careers or move to deal with these, these new costs. I'm concerned about that. We have, we talked at our joint planning commission and council meeting last week about all of the new development and a lot of it's for-profit housing, which is going to bring on potentially another thousand unit, users into the system. And they're going to take advantage of a lot of the cheaper supply we had in the past and it's not necessarily fair to some of the residents that I've been talking about. Because not only will they get hit with that increased cost of the water bill, but a huge proportion of the high-density housing is also going into the district. So they're going to have to bear the cost, not only literally of increased water prices, but also worse traffic conditions, worse parking conditions, increased density. So it's, it's something that I'd really like to have the city do more on and study this, this impact. And we talked about it last Thursday and I hope we keep moving forward with that discussion.
Oh, did you want to respond?
I just wanted to add something because Mr. Dominguez brought up a point that I think is really important. So we've been talking about revenue requirements, 21% is what the need is, and that's really the aggregate number, but the impact on individual customers will be different. I want to make sure that's understood because people are going to think, well, why didn't mine go up, it would be less or more than that. So the low moderate, low users will only see about a 9% increase to their bill, whereas the both folks in the moderate and high will see closer to in the 30s, low 30s to mid 30s. And it's just the way water is assigned and all that. I think about seven or eight units of water are kind of the tipping point. You're going to be about 20% of a rate increase or 21% at that point. Above that, you're going to see more, below that, you're going to see less of an increase. So just to, for full disclosure, it's not 21%. It just depends on where you're at.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hart?
Yeah, the only thing I wanted to add in response to Councilmember Dominguez's comments about additional development and the impact on water supplies. It's something, if you read the blog posts on articles about newspaper, about water, that is something consistently people don't understand. And they're, they, it is, it's hard to understand because it's, you see new development and you think, that's a lot of water, you know? Well, how can we be doing this? You hear that a lot in reference to development in Galita, less so in Santa Barbara, but increasingly I think people are going to start saying that. And we have talked about this in a lot of detail. And we have talked about this in a lot of detail, early on in the discussion about a water strategy is whether, you know, having additional restriction on new development was a significant issue in the water supply equation. You know, you probably don't have the slides that show that, but that's something we should probably revisit with our drought update, is the context discussion about the impact of additional development and how small a percentage of water demand that really is. Almost an inconsequential amount of water in the context of city demand on water. So, you know, just want to reaffirm as people are listening, that is not what's driving water rates. That's not what's driving our water supply. That's not in fact at all the case. What is, is the drought and the lack of rainfall. And frankly, outdoor landscaping still is the biggest water user that people have control over. So, it's important for us to remind people about the issues that are important in this discussion and ones that they seem like they're important but frankly are not. And I would appreciate that when you come back in a couple of weeks.
Yeah, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hart, that will be part of the April 26 discussion. We'll be talking about the impacts of development as we propose the amended stage three drought declaration.
That was a topic at last week's joint meeting with the Planning Commission, the issue was brought up, so that's good to hear. Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor? Aye. That's unanimous. Thank you very much. All right, item number 20.
Memorandum of Understanding for the Cabrillo Boulevard Union Pacific Railroad Underpass Project.
Mr. Hart?
Madam Mayor, with the advice of council, I'm going to sit down from this item to avoid the appearance of a conflict of interest.
We'll see you at the next item. Dayton?
Madam Mayor, councilmembers, this is, this item's a memorandum of understanding with the Santa Barbara County Association of Governments regarding the Union Pacific Bridge at Cabrillo Boulevard. And just by way of introduction, this project is one of three projects known as parallel projects to the 101 High Occupancy Vehicle Lane Project that is moving forward. The Santa Barbara County Association of Governments added three projects that they call parallel projects and this is one. The other, the other two are the Olive Mill Interchange and the San Ysidro Interchange. The Olive Mill Interchange is both in the county and the city and would be a separate item. So, here we are with the MOU for the Cabrillo Boulevard Union Pacific Railroad Bridge. I want to start by just showing you a picture, an aerial of the interchange and you can, I've just outlined the railroad in reds, just so you can highlight it. One of the interesting things by way of introduction for this is about our freeway system is, it's located adjacent to the railroad tracks. And you find this consistently throughout the region. It's kind of an interesting thing and it's a good location for it, but it also means that whenever we address freeway interchanges, this freeway interchange is proposed to be replaced in the highway project. Whenever we do that, we have to also deal with the railroad. And just to show you other locations, this is the Lacumbra Interchange and you can see when we replace the bridge over the freeway, we also replace the bridge over the railroad tracks. Another example, Fairview, when we widened this bridge in the 90s, we also widened the bridge over the railroad tracks. It's just, it's just a common thing and almost every interchange is right next to the railroad tracks. We have to do them in parallel. So, this one is no different. And as you can see, there is, it's pretty wide. It's actually, if you include the roadway and then this is actually, the extension of the beachway was intended to be the extension of the beachway and then sidewalks and bike lanes. It gets to be about 90 feet wide as opposed to, and you can see the arrow which shows the view we're looking at now of the Union Pacific Bridge. That distance wall-to-wall is 29 feet with substandard bike lanes and substandard vehicle lanes. So, you can see we're coming from a very, very small opening to a very wide opening. And then just to go over what those changes would be, it's kind of hard to understand, but just to understand what those changes will be, if you look at the main lines, if I just highlight the main lines, the northbound and southbound main lines, what the new project will do is it pushes those to the middle and then it adds the ramps to the outside of the freeway. Many of you are familiar with the southbound ramp that we closed in the early 2000s. That will be restored at that location. So, then when we, when I show you again back at that entrance to the bridge, you can see that the ramps will be right beyond the bridge. And that means that if you're getting on the southbound 101 and you're coming out of this, this bridge, you'll only have one lane to either go right or straight. So, there could be extreme backups. And then also not having the pedestrian and the bicycle connection, which our local coastal plan requires. There was an earlier attempt to actually build a tunnel in this area to avoid the widening of this bridge and that was ultimately unsuccessful with Union Pacific. And so, now, as I said, SB CAG has created this parallel project. The new bridge would emulate, the new bridge, the new Union Pacific Bridge will emulate the width of the downstream interchange, roughly about 90 feet. And this is, this is one example of what it could be in terms of lanes, including the sidewalks, bike lanes. And you'll see two lanes, one for through traffic coming, going through the interchange and then one turning right so that people who are going on the freeway are not impacted there. So, some, one of the, some of the responses we've got when we took to the Planning Commission was like, wow, that's really wide. Well, it's, it's, when you see the other interchange, you'll understand why and you'll see that they really fit together. The amount of money we're estimating at this point for this project is 22.7 million, so it's not a cheap project. There are some pretty big elements that go into this. We, we're trying to work with the railroad to do a permanent new railroad. You can't close the railroad for any amount of time. It has to remain open at all times. So, when we build a new bridge, we have to, we have to keep the railroad open. Means, so we tried to build it to the side and not impact the railroad. But what, the way it's turned out, we're going to have to build the bridge twice. So, we're going to build one to the outside and then, and then we're going to have to take that down, that temporary bridge and put it back in the middle. And that adds to the expense. The other thing is, on the Union Pacific Line, there are five fiber optic lines that cost a million each to deal with when we deal with this bridge. We're hoping that some of that money, when we, when we work with SB CAG to look for some of those, some of those monies that we can actually have the railroad have those fiber optic lines responsible for their fiber optic line moving. So, in terms of the MOU that you have before you today, the terms of those will go through 2018. The complete, what it handles eventually is the completion of the environmental and the 35, you have to get to 35% design to actually do the environmental. So, that's kind of logical. This MOU is designed so that we can go to the Planning Commission with the environmental and deal with that ahead and get the permitting that's required. The whole, the whole trick here is to try to get the permitting of the freeway and the permitting of this project to kind of parallel. So, that's what we're attempting to do. There is an option with this MOU that we could extend it also through design. And then this is, SB CAG has asked the city to manage this project, but they're also agreeing to fund the city time that would go into managing the project. This is 100% funded by SB CAG and they have existing monies, not just for this portion, but for design that we think will cover design, although there has been no money identified as of yet for the final construction. The next steps is for us, once you've agreed to this, is to advertise for, request for qualifications for firms to do that design and then award contract. We'll be back to you in July or August. And then this phase of the MOU would be complete in fall of 2008. Would that answer any questions yet?
Thank you. Any questions? Go ahead, Mr. Hotchkiss.
What's the timeline on this though? You said fall, then after that, how long? Well, completion of fall 2018, okay.
After, after we've done the 35% design and, and this is assuming that the Planning Commission can permit this and this gets a coastal development permit, we can complete the rest of the design probably within about six months. And then it really becomes dependent upon funding.
Just out of curiosity, the fiber optics you're talking about, are they in the ground or overhead?
They're in the ground and they run across the bridge, I believe to the side, but the, it's very common to run those fiber optic lines on railroad rightaways because they're wide.
Ms. Mario?
Thank you. So, this is how it works sometimes with these big projects. We will go ahead or SB CAG will go ahead and spend $800,000 for design without really knowing where the 23, I saw 24 somewhere in the report, where that 24 million will come from?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Councilmember Mario, that's very, very common with these types of projects. In fact, that's exactly what's happening with the 101 HOV project. We're short some 150 to 200 million dollars on that project, but moving forward design, we have been advised time again, SB CAG has specifically, that you have to stage these projects through design and be what is known as shovel-ready in order, that becomes a very attractive way to actually get money if you're shovel-ready. Because when the rain falls, meaning money, it falls and if you're not ready to spend it, then you're not able to. So, this is very, very common process.
Thank you, Mr. Dayton.
Any speaker slips? No? Ms. Antle, any speaker slips? No? Okay. Okay. Could you just put the funding portion in just to highlight exactly what's being funded is up through that subtotal design, right? Is that what, I mean, there's the 800,000 subtotal, there's a number of subtotals. So, how much, when you said it's fully funded and we're going forward, how far down that line are we getting towards? Is it the 1.6 that's fully total now that's funded?
Yes, we think that SB CAG has money for that.
Okay. So, right, so just to highlight, and I think Ms. Mario, you hit the nail on the head as they said, we're getting to that point, but really the 19.1 and 1.5 and the 400,000 still, there's no, there's no source right now at all, not part of the 101 HOV project, not part of Measure 8 projects. It's, you know, it's going to have to be figured out somewhere. So, just to put that, just to be clear on that, I think that's important. Mr. Hotchkiss and then Mr. White.
Do we know what a likely source for that 19 is? Is there a federal program that we're going to go after?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think it's probably going to be state or federal level. What the city hopes to do, remember this is a, you know, we've had kind of a history here and the city's been championing this project because we believe that it's really important with the widening of the freeway to get this project done. There are, I think the city staff would tell you the best way to do that is to put it all in together with the freeway project and ask for one sum amount. SB CAG may be thinking a different way. We actually invited them to this meeting and I don't see them here, but I'm not sure how they would answer that question. The monies that we're spending on design came from a lowest caps line item that is actually a little bit not even related to the design, but SB CAG was able to ask for a change for that money to go to this project. So, sometimes there's creative things that come up that they're able to do. But I think city staff's opinion is that we would have it lumped with the freeway and then go for the lump sum amount, which is already very, very big. The other thing, I just want to make sure I'm clarified that the 800,000 is the portion we're talking about today, but then we'd have an option to come back to the 1.95.
All right. Thank you.
Mr. White?
I'm ready to make a motion, Madam Mayor.
Go right ahead.
Okay, so I would move the staff recommendation.
Your second?
Yes.
Okay, moved by White, second by Hotchkiss. And before we vote, I just want to commend you in particular, Mr. Dayton, and everyone on the city staff team working with SB CAG. It's been our goal the entire time to work in partnership with this particular project to keep it moving. And so, this is the next step in getting there. So, okay, with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Great, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. We move on to item number 21.
Request from Councilmembers White and Rouse regarding a recent legal ruling on the Highway 101 widening project.
Okay, so this is a request from two councilmembers. Unfortunately, Mr. Rouse isn't, didn't make, is not here today, so we usually have both of them give introductory remarks on what they'd like to see. So, Mr. White, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, as, as we know, the environmental impact report for the Caltrans, for the highway widening project was challenged and, and there were, I mean, the Caltrans lost pieces of that where the Judge Andrew Lee ruled that the environmental impact report is not adequate and there's more work to be done. I'm interested in knowing, and it's now been three or four months since that, five months since that ruling occurred. So, I thought it was time that the council get updated on that, first of all, just on where that project stands and also engage with, with, whether it's Caltrans staff or SB CAG staff, with other staff to see what can be done to, by the city of Santa Barbara to, first of all, to understand what those impacts are going to be on the city of Santa Barbara, how is that relating to us? And also how Santa Barbara City engages to facilitate that project. So, it's all, it's that whole context. I think it's, this is obviously one of the critical projects for this city and it's been too long since we've heard about it and it's time for us to get to push a little bit and see what we can learn and also how we can help. So, that would be my request that the council ask our own staff to put together that, that package and bring it back to us sometime this summer with the opportunity both to learn and to guide the project as it, as it goes forward.
Any questions or comments on that or?
Yeah, I have a question. Can staff make any comment at all at this point on that?
Mr. Dayton, Mr. Kalan?
I'm happy to help. Councilmember Hotchkiss, the, the Judge Andrew Lee's ruling identified a pretty specific job for Caltrans, namely to look more deeply at impacts on local intersections. Those intersections are largely in Santa Barbara. And so, it would seem fairly simple to contact Caltrans and ask them what they expect to be doing on that work. Another part of the judge's ruling is that the revised portion of the EIR will need to be recirculated for comment. Mr. Casey informs me that it is very typical for the city to comment on EIRs like that and we would need some direction, given the nature of this project, from council if we are to get very deeply involved in that commenting process.
But that direction would come after the first phase of looking at this?
That's how I understand the motion.
That's what you're thinking?
Yes.
Yeah, I see, all right.
Any other questions or comments?
Madam Mayor.
Go ahead, Ms. Mario.
Well, I remember our Planning Commission submitting a letter. I mean, I assume that's going to be the process this time out?
Mr. Kalan, do you know if the Planning Commission has a role in this upcoming process?
Not automatically, Madam Mayor. And I think that this has been a sensitive enough process that Mr. Casey may wish and I certainly would want council guidance before stepping into the project.
So, if I'm understanding, the request here is to give staff direction to come back at a future council date with a proposed plan of what's possible in terms of the city's role as it relates to the recirculation efforts of the EIR. Is that sufficient?
After some consultation with Caltrans.
Right.
Yes, as, the first piece of that is for council to learn where we are and what are we dealing with in terms of context. These intersections are primarily in the city of Santa Barbara. Let's, let's learn a little bit about that and then let's learn where we are in that process. Something, in five months, no doubt, something has happened. And, and then where are we, where are we going and how can we help? Because this is, we want this to move forward.
Mr. Hotchkiss?
Well, this makes sense because clearly there's going to be an impact on our streets. How fast can the staff come back with something, do you think? Two months, three months, less? Two months, three months, less?
Madam Mayor, Councilmember Hotchkiss, I think we can come back with exactly the information that was in the previous EIR that's pretty spelled out. I think that we could do that on pretty short order, you know, probably like a month and a half. I think what I'm really hearing, and I think what Mr. Kalan is saying, is that we really need to hear from Caltrans about what they're doing in the past five months and what their participation is.
So we don't have control of that, obviously.
Yeah. But bringing back what has already been presented in the EIR is simple to do.
Would that be of any value without the Caltrans input?
Well, I think, my opinion would be together. It would be really good. But we, it is what it is. I mean, the impacts that are, that were cited are pretty well spelled out, the which intersections, what's the extent of the impact.
So what Caltrans is going to tell us this time isn't going to change that?
Well.
We don't expect.
I think what's required in, well.
Councilmember Hotchkiss, we don't know that, and I think that's why the consultation with Caltrans makes some sense. The other point I should add is that, once impacts are identified, which they were not properly in the former EIR, the environmental law imposes a duty to attempt to mitigate those impacts where it's feasible.
Right, that's important to us, obviously. Yeah, okay. So what do we need at this point? We need a motion to do?
Need a motion to give staff direction to come back in what capacity?
And I thought I made that motion. I made a move that staff, that council direct staff, to come back in, within a couple of months, within two months, with an update on the status of the EIR work that Caltrans is doing, and to, also to remind us what those impacts that were laid out in the EIR to begin with, and to advise council, what, if anything, council can do to assist in moving this project forward.
Is there a second?
Just a question, if I could. Do we need to add to that? We want contact with Caltrans before the staff comes back?
I thought I did.
Yeah, I think that was in the motion.
Yeah, then there's a second.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez and then Mr. Hart.
So maybe some specific things that the staff can comment on would be the need for either outside counsel or consulting firm. I took a look at the Caltrans EIR, and it's like this thick, so I didn't bother to print it, but I tried to look at it and give it a fairly good scan on my computer, and it's very long and involved, and I'm not sure if we have either the manpower or expertise on our staff, and that's something I'm sure our counsel can weigh in on. But it is a very complicated EIR. I know Judge Annerly put a lot of time and effort into making a judgment. So that might be an area where a small amount of funds might be merited and produce a great result in getting some of these intersections the best protection we can for the city, and then the same thing with the consulting firm, who could also do the same kind of thing, less from the legal angle, but from the environmental angle.
Mr. Hart.
Well, I guess the only thing I'd add is that I think if we're going to do this, we ought to ask for an update on the status of the 101 project in general. I think that more people are concerned about helping that project get going as fast as possible than are concerned about the status of the EIR. I think Caltrans would be happy to bring forward those, what they're planning to do with, respond to the judge's ruling, as well as an update on the project. There's significant progress on the project overall. And my understanding is that the delay from the EIR is not going to necessarily affect the timing of that project, depending on how complicated that gets, but it seems like it's about time for there to be an update on the status of the project.
And I think that's the point, right?
I think that's a good point, Mr. Hart.
Well, that wasn't the point, but now it may be part of the point.
Part of the point.
Okay. Mr. Dominguez, your light's on. Did you have something else? Nope? Okay. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Thank you very much. Okay, item number 22.
Request from councilmembers Dominguez and White regarding staff review of mobile home park conversion regulations.
Okay, this is another request from two councilmembers, and so we'll start with Mr. Dominguez, if you have any opening comments, and then Mr. White.
I put this on the agenda after speaking with members of some of the mobile home parks in my district, and when we had discussions, I realized that our ordinances hasn't been updated recently, and some other jurisdictions around the state had been taking efforts to update theirs, and I think there had been conversations previously in the city before I joined council along these lines, so I thought I would just help keep the effort moving forward. So that's why I put it on the agenda, along with Councilmember White.
Okay, Mr. White.
Mr. Dominguez approached me to put this on the agenda, and I said, "I agree."
So, I'm sorry, yes. Oh, Mr. Kalan.
Madam Mayor.
You don't have a light, see?
At an appropriate time, I have a couple of comments.
I think now is the perfect time.
All right, great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. Madam Mayor, members of the council, we have about four different chapters in the municipal code that address either mobile home rent control or conversion, and most of them date back to 1984. And so I'm in the position of really divining council policy based on those sections of the code. And council policy, as it's expressed in the code, is to, first and foremost, preserve mobile homes as affordable housing stock; secondly, to discourage or regulate the conversion of mobile home parks to other uses; and thirdly, of course, to manage the rent increases that happen in those parks. All of those regulations, being more than 30 years old, need a look. So this is work that my office would welcome. I can't speak for Mr. Buell and the CD staff. I can say that if we go forward with this as a direction from council, I will probably use some of the existing funding I have to retain, a legal specialist who will help us identify the latest and greatest opportunities to carry out the council policies that, as I see them currently in the code.
Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I sometimes carpool with Galida City Councilmember Michael Bennett up to North County for different things, and he likes to brag about how protective Galida's mobile home ordinance is. And I didn't get to research that before I came today, so I apologize for that, but I think there are resources out there, and I heartily support our city protecting mobile home park, affordable housing to the utmost. And I'd like to make a motion that we direct staff and our city attorney's office to pursue this as time allows. Is it a discussion during the budget hearings? Maybe you said there's funding already available, so, but I would move that we ask city staff to pursue updating our mobile home ordinance.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, moved by Mario, second by Dominguez. Did you have something, Ms. Santal? No. So, Mr. Kalan, that you may come back to council if you need to, to authorize a contract for outside services, if that's necessary. Is that what you're envisioning, the first step?
Madam Mayor, I'm guessing that I won't need to spend that much money.
Okay, good. That's good. That's good. All right. And then it would go to the ordinance committee?
Yeah, right. And again, I do see the housing staff in the back of the room. I can't speak for them. I can say, as I did, that I think the laboring order would be borne by a contract lawyer.
Okay. Okay. Mr. Dominguez?
No, I got a question.
Oh, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Dominguez first and then Mr. Hotchkiss. Go ahead. Light your mic, there you go.
And the underlying cause and the underlying goal, more specifically, especially with my district and, I think, citywide, these principles hold true well, is when I talk to residents in the park, some of them have been multi-generational residents, and one of the things I learned when I was knocking on doors in my district, we have a ton of tenants who are new to the city or who move around a lot. And with this particular park, I found a lot of people who'd been there for a while, and they know each other, their social circles are much more stable, and just from my research and having worked for nonprofits where housing was a significant part of their platforms, you learn that educational outcomes, economical outcomes, social outcomes, lower crime rates all occur when people stay in communities longer and have a stable source of housing. So that's the goal I have in mind with updating our ordinance, and not to mention because they asked me to do it.
And just to be clear, I see some members of the public here, but there's no speaker slip, so, okay, you're just here to listen. Fantastic. Okay, Mr. Hotchkiss.
Oh, not to pin you down, but can you give us a ballpark figure of what kind of money you're going to ask, just so we're not shocked?
Well, the council and last year's budget authorized two sources of funding for my office. The reason for that is that there is a balance point between hiring permanent or temporary staff and using expertise of people who are specialists. The first pot of money is about $30,000 that was meant to backfill the energy we spent on the new zoning ordinance, so that's one source. The second source of money is a general allocation of about $45,000 for outside council projects. I haven't tapped either of those extensively. So we are looking at, right now, probably about $150,000 return to the general fund from this fiscal year. I'm guessing that we're talking about $15,000 to $30,000 tops.
That's all good news. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Mario.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I'd like to acknowledge Ms. Bartlett out in the audience, and, Mr. Kalan, I know that you represent, ma'am, some owners of mobile home parks, and that you might have something to contribute to the conversation. I encourage you to do so, and also welcome you to contact us, or Mr. Dominguez, since he's taking the lead. I think most of the mobile home parks are there. Just recognizing you for your good work in our community. Thank you.
Okay, great. So we have a motion and a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, that's unanimous. Okay, councilmember committee assignment reports. Is there any? We have one thing Mr. Kalan asked me to bring up at this point. There is a public meeting tonight about the Bicycle Master Plan, and it appears that more than a quorum of the council was interested in attending. It wasn't noticed that way, so, Mr. Kalan, I think, did we want to try to figure out what is the best approach in this way? It has to do with the Brown Act, and the last thing we want is a Brown Act violation, you know, accusation when it comes to the Bicycle Master Plan. So, Mr. Kalan, can you elaborate?
Yes, Madam Mayor. The Brown Act allows a majority or all of the council to attend community events. It does not allow you to attend events put on by the city unless they are noticed meetings of, for example, the Planning Commission or ABR. As I understand, tonight's event, it's characterized as a listening workshop, and it hasn't been noticed in a way that would allow a majority of the council to attend. So you have a range of choices. None of you could go, or up to three of you could go. Those would be the two options.
Or one or two, obviously.
Or one or two, yes.
Ms. Mario.
I'm willing to go home and nurse my cold, and I understand Councilmember Hart wants to go, and if someone would, is it okay for us to listen to notes afterwards?
Yes, it's your presence at the meeting that's the problem.
I'm happy to read notes later. Thank you.
And, Mr. Hart, you're interested in attending?
Yes, it's in the district I live in, so.
Okay. So, anyone else?
You know, I think the sort of expecting that I would go, so I should be there.
Okay. And so, and Mr. White and Mr. Dominguez, so we're looking at Mr. Hart, Mr. Hotchkiss, and Mr. Dominguez. Is that right? And that satisfies all Brown Act questions and issues. Have fun this evening. Okay, good.
Don't say anything.
Just listening. Right. Mr. Hart, your light's on. Did you have something else?
I have it on.
Okay, all right. Anything else on councilmember committee assignment reports? Okay, just briefly, you may notice, thank you, Ms. Santal, for taking over the chair today. Mr. Casey's actually up in Sacramento today, and I'm also on the way up there this evening for a hearing tomorrow. There are two hearings having to do with the armory. And there's a bill that Assemblymember Williams has put on, and so the hearings are about that, allowing extra time, basically, for the city and the school district to potentially find funding in order to purchase that property. As you may recall, the armory was, if you wanted to sell the armory, it wasn't really just for cash, they needed a swap of land and a new armory. This bill was passed last year, changing that, but gave a deadline of July of this year for municipal governments and school districts to come up with the funds to do so. This particular armory was not listed as an exception to that, so Mr. Williams's bill will give, basically, an extra year for us to try to figure out if this is an option. So that's the purpose of why Mr. Casey isn't here today, and Superintendent David Cash is also up there. He was up there last week. So hopefully, we'll know more after next week, but it's potentially very exciting, and obviously, if the bill passes, then we have to figure out how and how to fund it, which could come in the form of a school bond that the school district has already been thinking about doing anyway. So stay tuned, and we'll let you know next week what happened. And with that, we are adjourned. Thank you.